Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I would like to call for order the Valdosta Board of Education Works Session Call Meeting from March 28, 2023 at 7:00 p.m. At this time, we'll have invocation by Mr. Lee.
Heavenly Father, come to the Facebooks in our heart. Thank you for being so good to us. Thank you, Heavenly Father, for continuing to watch over children. Heavenly Father, continue to guide and protect them from harm's way, not only at school, but at home as well. And ask for the Father that you touch every parent's heart, let them be involved with the children's education. Thank Heavenly Father for our teachers tonight, our administrators, and thank you for our interns, attendants, and Heavenly Father, we thank you for the board that you've put in place to carry out your word. We're asking now, Heavenly Father, that you just not only bless our system, but bless systems all over the world. In Tennessee tonight, there's more than the loss of children. Have mercy on them. May Heavenly Father, we ask that you just continue to be our men and women in all forces, Lord, for the year and fall, and continue to bless and save the hungry and needy all over the land. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Would you please say your own little pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good afternoon again, and welcome those that are here and those that are watching us Facebook Live. At this time, may I have approval of the agenda?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the agenda.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? May I have approval of the minutes from February 28, 2023?
Madam Chair, I move that we accept the minutes from February 28, which is presented.
Seven. Any discussion? All in favor? At this time, may I have approval of the minutes from March 8, 2023?
Madam Chair, I was abstaining on that.
Oh, I'm sorry. May I have approval of the minutes from March 8, 2023?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Please make note to review the minutes from March 14 and March 21, 2023. At this time, I will turn it over to Ms. April Doyle.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is April Doyle. I am the E.L.A. Curriculum Director for Valdosta City Schools, and I come to you this evening to announce our district winners for the Young Georgia Authors Competition for Writing. The purpose of the Young Georgia Authors Competition for Writing is to encourage students to develop enthusiasm for and expertise in the area of writing, to provide a context to celebrate their writing successes, and to recognize student achievement in the areas of arts and academics. This prestigious competition has been engaging Georgia students for more than two decades and is open to any student currently enrolled in Georgia public schools from kindergarten to 12th grade. The competition is sponsored by the Georgia Language Arts Supervisors Class and the Georgia RISA Network with support from the Georgia Department of Education. I will start with our kindergarten district winner. When I call your names, if you will, please come up to receive your district certificate and your RISA certificate. Our first student is our kindergarten winner, Akash Patel from Salas Mahoney Elementary School. Our first grade winner from J.O. Lomax Elementary School is Taj Genrich. Our second grade winner is Caleb Stone from S.L. Mason Elementary School. Our third grade winner is Serenity Clifton from S.L. Mason Elementary School. Our fourth grade winner is Levante Davis from Salas Mahoney Elementary School. Our fifth grade winner is from Pondale Elementary School, Austin, Chicago. Our sixth grade winner from the middle school level is Miss Jaida Davis from Becca. Our seventh grade winner is Brianna Smith from Becca. Our eighth grade winner is also from Becca, and we received word this week that our RISA has also selected their winners that will move on to state competitions, so this is new information. And Ms. Haven Forbes will be moving on to state competition. From our high school division, ninth grade, also from Becca, is Ciara Deal. Our tenth grade winner, Miss Madeline James from Valdosta High School. And our eleventh grade winner from Valdosta High School is Amir Dukes. And last but not least, our twelfth grade winner and also a RISA level winner from Becca, she will be moving on to state competition in writing is Ms. Kalandra Council. And these are K-12 winners for Valdosta City Schools. Writing is not easy. That is one of the most challenging skills in our literacy block, so we commend these students for having courage to enter the competition and express their thoughts and creativity through writing. Let's give them a round of applause.
All right, young ladies and young gentlemen, if we could have the five of you come stand right here in the front. Kind of squeeze everybody in if we can, and then if you'll take a step down that way, yeah, just a little bit, come here, stand right here. All right, back up. Come right here, bud. All right, y'all just kind of come in and squeeze in, and let's see if we can get everybody in the picture. And turn your certificates around, and this is Doyle, I think this is a record, I don't know that we've ever had everybody here in one night. That's one row. Okay, and then here, if you want, can I take a picture? Y'all are more than welcome to come up and take one as well. All right, one, two, three. All right, one, two, three. One, two, three. All right, in here, if you want to come and grab one real quick.
On behalf of the Board of Members, our Chair, and all of the board members, I want to say we're extremely proud of your work you accomplished. We're proud that you're part of Valdosta City Schools. Anne, guardian, if you're here, please stand, and I want to recognize you as well, because you're part of the Valdosta City Schools. Thank you for allowing me to be a part of Valdosta City Schools. Thank you all.
At this time, here, if you all want to stay, you're more than welcome, but please feel gracefully at this time. Okay, at this time, I would turn it over to Ms. Jennifer Steadley.
And I appreciate that it's been speaking out a little bit early. We have had this on our agenda before, and we had a little bit of a communication error, and we just couldn't let it go without bringing Ms. Kimbrough back before the board so that she could be here in front of you, and I can tell you a little bit more about her Life Changer Award. So Ms. Kimbrough, I'm reading this about you, if you'd like to come up, and then she has got, Ms. Smith has a copy of her actual Brain Certificate she received from Life Changers. J.O. Lomax Elementary School Counselor, Ms. Regina Kimbrough, has been nominated for the 2223 National Life Changer of the Year Award, sponsored by the National Life Changer Group, Life Group Foundation, sorry. Life Changer of the Year recognizes the awards that very best K-12 educators and school district employees across the United States who are making a difference in the lives of students by exemplifying excellence, positive influence, and leadership. Along with her role as a school counselor, Ms. Kimbrough is a parent engagement coordinator, a community partner and education coordinator, a PVIAS coach, the school PR coordinator, and a leadership team member. She worked for the variety of people to ensure that her students, their families, and the staff have the resources they need to be successful. She works tirelessly in her community through multiple organizations she's affiliated with. Even her positive emails have the ability to change the behavior of a student or get a staff member to have a good smile. According to her nominator, which was her son, Aaron, "If I could put a label on all that she does in a day, it would be life-changing." There's always a parent drying up their tears because they've been connected with a resource after talking to her, or a community partner who has mentored after talking to her. Her work has a lifelong effect and makes a positive difference in people's lives. So as I mentioned before, there are nominations that come in from all 50 states, and all it says is springtime. Stand when they just say springtime. I need a date. Okay, let's start this week. So we will know more information, there's one Brain Prize winner, four Brain Prize finalists, 10 Life Changer Award winners, a Sphere Award winner, a Capstone Award winner, and a Spotlight Award winner. All those come with monetary prizes and other accolades and things for Ms. Kimbrough and essentially for J.O. Lomax and Valdosta City Schools. So we wanted to have the opportunity to have her run the board so that we could congratulate her, pat her on the back, and thank her for a job well done. Can you? Here we go, the light on, and it's just kind of going on. All right, one, two, three. Got it. Thank you, and congratulations.
At this time, I would turn it over to Mr. Samir.
Good evening, Madam Chair, board members. On behalf of the faculty and staff, students, welcome to Valdosta Middle School. Tonight, I'm here to give you an overview of 2022-2023 Valdosta Middle School's improvement plan. Last June, teachers, counselors, academic coaches, and administrators gathered survey results from students, parents, faculty, and staff. As a team, we looked at preliminary GMASS scores, attendance reports, STAR assessment scores, discipline reports, among many other data points to develop four goals to help our school improve. Each goal has numerous action steps to help us achieve that goal. If you look on the handout that I gave you, it's packed into several pages taken together. On the top page, handout number one, I present to you those four goals for you to serve. I want you to note, in the literacy and math goals, the first two goals on that first page, there are no GMASS comparisons. GMASS is offered once a year. Once a teacher gets the results, the child moves on to another grade. There is no way for a teacher to use it to determine a student's progress and to have time to help that student improve throughout that year. Instead, we use the STAR test. It occurs three times a year. It's a good indicator of students' GMASS ability. We can see the children's academic ability when they come to us, and as the year progresses, we can see that the student is progressing too. Adjustments can then be made throughout the school year to help the students whenever necessary. Addressing the literacy endeavors for goals similar, in both, teachers have not only worked hard to help students to get out of the beginning level, they continuously emphasize to helping students get from proficient to distinguished levels. This is accomplished through reading logs, prescribed data analysis, the next steps work in PLCs along with reflective lessons, goal setting with students, and a huge transition from the traditional before and after-school tutoring to a during-school tutoring program for our Tier 2 and our Tier 3 students. Beginning on the second page of the handout are charts for math and E.L.A., illustrating our state status throughout the school year. Specifically, almost all E.L.A. and math grades in the beginning level have declined throughout the year and meeting our goal percentage for that. We still have a lot of work to do, a long way to go for us to feel like we have been successful in educating these children. If you look at goal three, disposing gaps, disposing gaps among our subgroups, Valdosta had problems this several years ago, and we've corrected it. However, it is an area that can easily begin to be concerning if we neglect it, so we keep this as a goal to help monitor and update throughout the year. If you look at our fourth goal, this involves our school culture and climate. In short, this goal helps us keep a pulse on the school environment. The overarching question for this goal is, do students in faculty enjoy being at school, and do they feel safe at school? Valdosta Middle School teachers build relationships with their students and reward good behavior. We have PVIAS game days, Kona Ice, school store, field days, and other activities to help promote positive learning environments and to help develop strong relationships among students and with their teachers. In summary, our teachers consistently work hard to help the students achieve their best. We're looking forward to receiving the students' GMASS scores this summer to see their success and in turn measure our success. Thank you for allowing me to give you this overview of our school improvement plan. Any questions?
Do you have any questions or comments for Mr. Samir? Thank you for your leadership.
Thank you.
At this time, I would turn it over to Dr. Hudson.
Thank you, Madam Chair, board. At this time, I want to review the February finance with you all. If you have your iPad, you should have an attached copy there. If you don't have your iPad with you, you should have a hard copy there that's receipted. And we'll start with the cash flow report. And we'll start with the expenditures for the month of February. Payroll was a little bit more than $3.2 million. Operating was a little bit more than $4.4 million. Total expenditures for the month of February was a little bit more than $7.7 million. Capital projects, Guardian Bank account, we had no expenses during the month of February, but we did have revenue going in. We had our monthly drop of $150,000 that we moved from SPO 6 up to capital projects, and then we earned interest in the amount $10,701.65. So revenue going in was $160,701.65. So in Guardian Bank capital projects account, we have a little bit more than $9.1 million. Revenue, QBE, Quality Basic Education, we had our monthly revenue coming in of $3.9 million, a little bit more than $3.9 million. Taxes, we received just a little bit more than a million, and so revenue for the month of February was a little bit more than $4.9 million. Cash, GIP, General Investment Pool, we had a little bit more than $32.9 million there. First State, we have a little bit more than $3.1 million. So total cash between GIP and First State is a little bit more than $36.1 million. Debt service, no expenses for the month of February, but we did have revenue going in. We moved $720,000 from SPO 6 up to debt service, and we earned interest in the amount of $15,485.16. So total revenue was $735,485.16. So in debt service, we have a little bit more than $5.2 million. SPO 5, no expenses, but we did earn some interest for that account. We earned $17,559.83, so in SPO 5, we have a little bit more than $5.1 million. And then finally, SPO 6, revenue for the month of February was $988,965.55. We did have expenses going out. Remember, we moved $150,000 from there up to capital projects and $720,000 up to debt service, so we had expenses in the amount of $870,000, leaving us with a balance in SPO 6 of a little bit more than $978,000. That's your cash flow report for the month of February. That's your cash flow report for the month of February. If there are any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer those at this time.
Dr. Hudson, it seems, uh... Am I right in regards to the revenue? Seems like it's slowing down in regards to our previous month?
Ye- yes, sir. I'm sorry.
Our collection.
Yes, sir. Previous months, we've been averaging just a little bit more over, just a little bit over a million dollars. So the past, well, February was the first time we've come in under a million. Okay, yes, sir. Okay. Uh, next report, if you all will look at your general fund budget status report for the month of February. And you should have a hard copy at your seat as well. Uh, on the revenue side, local taxes. Year-to-date, we've collected a little bit more than 25.6 million. And we estimated that we would collect a little bit more than 28 million. So as of Feb- at the end of February, we've collected a little bit more than 91% of what we projected. So that is very good at this point in the school year. Revenue year-to-date, we've collected a little bit more than 52.1 million, which is 68% of what we anticipated we would collect. We anticipated we would collect a little bit more than 76.5 million. So collections are coming in very well at this point in the school year. On the expenditure side, nothing's out of the ordinary. Year-to-date expenditures, we've, um, we have expenditures, uh, just a little bit more than 40.6 million. Our estimated expenditures for the year is a little bit more than 76.4 million. But please keep in mind that we are 66% of the school, well, 66% of the school year has elapsed. And our district expenditures only represent 53.23% of the annual general fund budgeted expenditures. So we are sitting in a good position. Uh, our expenditures are less than our revenue. Our expenditures are down. Revenue is up. Okay? So nothing out of the ordinary on the expenditure side. And then finally, with grant expenditures, I want to point out CARES, ESSR two. If you look at expenditures, year-to-date, we've spent just a little bit more than 1.2 million. CARES, ESSR three, year-to-date, we spent just a little bit more than 10.5 million. And keep in mind, on the grant side, with the grants, these are reimbursable grants. So when we spend, we receive these back from the state. And so if you drop down to the grant revenue, CARES, ESSR two, on the revenue side, we received 875,000 out of that 1.2, and REM is always lagging. And then ESSR three, we've received 9.9 out of the 10.5 that we've spent. So again, on the grant side, nothing's out of the ordinary, and we're looking good financially. Madam Chair, that's our financial report for the month of February. If there are any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer those at this time.
At this time, I'll turn it over to Mr. Sherwood.
Madam Chair. Madam Chair, Finance Committee met on March the 16th, 2023. We only had two agenda items. Uh, you should have a copy there on your, uh, laptop. First thing, which will, uh, will be an action item is first, is approval of the first draft, Dr. Hudson, is that correct?
I'm sorry, sir. I'm sorry.
On the, on the, are we on our action item tonight? Is it the draft copy?
No, sir. It's for the band equipment.
The band equipment?
Yes, sir.
Okay. It's, uh, we, we, you should have a copy of the budget. Uh, we asked them, the committee asked, uh, the, the finance department to send that also side by side so you can look at what the budget looked like against this current year, uh, budget, uh, and see the increases. Please go through that, ask questions, or send questions to the finance committee. Uh, because I think I'm starting moving pretty quickly as far as the budget goes for approval. Uh, and then I hope everyone did get the band instrument information and the instrument names. Dr. Hudson, it's, uh...
Sousaphone, which is a smaller version of a tuba.
A tuba, that's right. And, uh, in summary version, how about you recap that for us, Dr. Hudson?
Okay, all right, yes, sir. Uh, again, just quickly, the marching band ended the season with 11 tuba players. And so this coming season, they will have 14 tuba players. And so Mr. Kimber does not have enough tubas to satisfy the growth of this, of, of the band for next school term. So he's requesting that the board purchase 16 new sousaphones or tubas that will be placed at the high school for the marching band. The price of a sousaphone is 11,654 each. And keep in mind that the sousaphone is one of the more expensive pieces of band equipment in the band. And so therefore, 16 sousaphones at 11,654 would cost a total of 186,464. Again, with the, with the 11 that they currently have, Mr. Kimber is going to pass those down to the middle school because the middle school, they do not have any sousaphones or tubas for those students. And so it will be, those will be passed down, and the 16 new sousaphones will be there at, at high school for, for the marching band to meet their needs for the growth that they're having. Um, if the board agrees to, to do this tonight, these instruments can be paid for out of this year's current 2023 budget. Because keep in mind that our expenditures are coming in lower than anticipated according to our, our overall budgeted amount. So this is something that we can pay for out of this year's budget. And this will not affect any of the other expenditures that we already have for the remainder of the year. And again, if the board decides to do this, it will take four months for these instruments to come in. So that's, that's going to be close, you know, with, with having these in for, there for summer practice.
Right, uh, if the timeline over.
Yes, sir.
Committee, uh, comments, uh, or anything else that I may have missed, comments you may have?
This is an action item?
It is an action item. Madam Chair, I'd like to, uh, I don't know that we did come out of committee with that warrant. Do you remember?
We did not come out of committee. I was, I was on the first, I may have missed it, but I thought the figure was a little lower than 40,000.
Come again, I'm sorry, couldn't you?
I thought the figure was a little lower than 40,000, man.
No, no, it's 186,000. 186,464. No, no, no. 186,484.
Um, and, and Madam Chair, we, we did want to bring it out of committee, uh, so I will, because we wanted everybody to have a chance to do it because it was a different one out of the business. So at this time, I would like to make a motion that we approve the purchase of the band equipment as presented.
Second.
All in favor? At this time, I would turn it over to Mr. Lee.
How are you, Ms. Noble? So, to the...
Good evening. The Facilities Committee met Friday, March 24th, at 12:30 PM. And we had eight items on our agenda that we discussed. The first item was presented by our athletic director, Coach Mitchell. And he was discussing the possible dedication of the Ballasta High School track. Uh, just spoke a little bit about several coaches that started up the track program back in the 1970s at Ballasta High Schools. And they were discussing doing a possible dedication of the track to those coaches. Um, the committee asked them to gather a little more information to present on that to make sure that we have, um, everyone included that would need to be included in that. And he was asked to gather that information and bring that back, um, for further review. Um, so that was item number one. Item number two, um, we reviewed the bid results for the W. N. Painting renovation. We received five bids on February 23rd at 2:00 PM at Central Office. Um, Tyco Construction was the low bidder in the amount of 76,544.85. We have checked their references and everything checks out well. And so tonight, this is an action item on the agenda, and we are recommending that we award this contract to Tyco Construction.
So move.
All in favor?
Thank you. Item number three on the agenda, uh, YMCA has reached out to us for the use of one of our facilities for their summer camp program. Uh, we have partnered with them in the past and provided the use of the old Ballasta High School for that use, uh, which is no longer in existence. So we're, they are looking into using the gym at Veka for their summer program. Um, they have filled out the paperwork that is required and submitted their insurance. So tonight, we are asking for approval for the YMCA to use the gym at Veka this summer for their summer program camp.
Do you have a motion? All in favor?
Item number four, we had a community member reach out to us, um, for the use of the stadium in fall. Uh, specifically, they're asking for the date of October 14th. It's a Saturday. Uh, BSU does not play in the stadium that evening. They would like to use the stadium for a community-wide praise and worship event. Uh, we have asked that they complete some paperwork, give us some additional information, such as what churches would be involved, um, what group name they would be using, who the insurance would be under. Um, also, they are asking for, to like construct a stage on the field. So we're asking for some information just on how that's going to be set up and what they're going to use to protect the field if this event is approved by the board. So I have reached back out to my contact there for some additional information. So I will be gathering that to, to get back with the Facilities Committee, Committee for further discussion on that. We had a, um, update on the baseball softball complex out at Ballasta High School. Um, we do have movement out there and construction is underway. Temporary fencing has gone up along with silt fencing, and we should be seeing some land clearing this week out there. So that is well underway, and I was moving along good. We also reviewed, item number six, we reviewed our current enrollment at each of our facilities um, in comparison to what each school was built for. They're, uh, what we call FTE, full-time equivalent. So just reviewed those numbers, um, looking at space available in each facility, making sure that we stay on top of the, the growth of the school system and make sure each of our schools can hold, uh, what they're zoned for. So just kind of reviewed those numbers and compared them to what each school was built for. Item number seven, uh, Dr. Hudson, did you want to review the Black Pro Media contract tonight?
Yes, ma'am, my client. Uh, board, um, the Facilities Committee, Mr. Lee, wanted me to provide a copy of the Black Pro Media for broadcasting our football games. And so you should have a copy of that attached to your, um, to your, to your agenda. Um, and so we had a discussion about this, and then, uh, the Facilities Committee, uh, had a strong interest that this contract moving forward, you all correct me if I'm wrong, this contract moving forward will only be, it will, it will be for no more than two years, really year-to-year or no more than two. Okay? And so what, what you have here is the contract that was signed back on August the 2nd, 2022. It will, it will continue until December 31st, 2024. So it will cover this coming football season, 2023, and will also cover the 20, fall 2024, 2024 season as well. So once we get past this, then moving forward, this contract will either be year-to-year or no more than two years based on the, uh, recommendation coming out of Facility and the Football Board.
Dr. Hudson, were you able to secure a copy of this that was a signed by all parties copy as we discussed the other day?
Yes, I had, um, Ms. Kennedy reach out, and she reached out to Ms., who was that, Ms. Pigler? And Ms. Pigler sent us a copy of what we already have, so the top part of that was not executed.
What about the signatures, though? Because what we've got, there's no signature.
You don't? Okay. If you don't, then...
There's a signature of the witness, Ms. Pigler, but not Ms. Pokowski.
Okay. Okay, we'll, we'll take care of that.
It'd be a valid contract, it's got to have your signature.
What we got back was the exact same, so I'll follow up on that. Okay.
Madam Chair. Madam Chair, that, uh, contract, if it's the same that we had, is incomplete. And it needs to be done over, and it needs to be, uh, filled out correctly. Uh, I have the objection of the moving on with the number of years that is stated now. But I, I want to make sure that, uh, the next contract executed. And it needs to be done while this standing board is, is here. So when it comes up, it's already in place. So if we can, shouldn't take no time to get to work on that.
Yes, sir.
I'm, I'm, I'm asking to get the folks that needs to be responsible for their contract and staff and redo it and let's, let's get it done the right way, completely filled out.
Yes, sir. We will take care of that ASAP.
Okay. And the last item on the agenda was concerning our weapons detection system. And this was actually a security item that was presented by our Safety and Security Director, Mrs. Brenna Smith. Um, Ms. Smith, would you like to come up here and give us some information? Uh, I do believe this is an action item as well on the agenda tonight. And I'll let Ms. Smith just update you guys on what was discussed at the beginning.
Thank you, Madam Director. Madam Chair, first of all, board, Dr. Hudson, a good evening. On Friday, we talked about the weapons detection system that we are, um, we are really in need of. Again, on Friday, I was able to use the Denver shooting, school shooting last week. And here we are, um, just this week, having another one where six people are dead. Um, and what we want to do as a district is make sure we're taking proactive measures uh, to ensure the safety of our, our school district, our facilities. And one of the ways that we, I've researched, Dr. Hudson and I have been researching this, uh, for quite a bit, is a weapons detection system that is made by a company called Evolve. Um, the weapons detection system that we're, um, presenting tonight is, uh, what you would commonly see at Six Flags, Disney World, our, uh, partner here, Wild Adventure also has one. It's a non-invasive, um, touchless, seamless. Uh, we can get up to 1,800 students through a single-lane unit and up to, close to 4,000 people, um, on the dual lane within an hour. Uh, this will go at, um, every school that we have in the district. Um, again, it's, um, also a system that, that we don't have to leave up to human error. And we know that no system is fault-free. But this gives us the best opportunity to be able to deter weapons of mass casualties from being brought into, uh, the schools, um, and to prevent what could be, um, a catastrophe here in our local area. Um, again, the Evolve system, uh, it's available in a four-year subscription. Um, we do not, they do not provide them in a purchase option. If you purchase it, the price is much higher. Then we lose out on the support that they will provide, the repairs, annual maintenance. Uh, they will come down and provide us with, uh, several weeks of support for training for staff members who will use it. The difference between this Evolve system and the traditional metal detectors is for one metal detector, you have to have several people to operate it. And then a person would have to go through several times in order to identify where that weapon is that they have. Uh, with the Evolve system, it is, again... With the Evolve system, it is again, using artificial intelligence and it will actually put a square red box around the actual area where the weapon is detected. So it eliminates unnecessary and unreasonable searches of a person. It saves time for administrators. There's a flow control, there are two tablets that come with it. The flow control person stands in front, basically bringing everybody through like you would see in the Mercedes-Benz Stadium if you go into an athletic event. They just move you through and if you beep, they send you over to the side. That person is, would be the person responsible for searching. Again, it is going to put the box exactly where the weapon is detected. And then at that point, if a weapon is located, then the school resource officers will be notified with the press of a button. It sends out messages to, to everybody that's a responder on campus for them. And then of course, the school resource officers will handle the charges for bringing the weapon on campus. And then for those things that maybe not, umbrellas, if students take umbrellas in, if they have eyeglasses cases, the, the ones that are metal, the hard ones, it could set off because it's recognizing components of a potential bomb. And so again, it will quickly and efficiently get our students in and on campus and where they need to be within a short period of time. And we're looking at getting twenty-three systems, again, that will outfit basically two per school. Badosta High School would have three and they would have a dual lane system because they have a lot of kids that have to go through the cafeteria to get in in the mornings, which eighty, eighty-five percent of our student population are car riders. So they come in through one entrance and then you have the car riders who come into another one. The only campuses that would have one single lane would be Horizon Academy, Horn Learning Center, and then of course, Badosta Early College Academy.
At the high school, where are they going to put? Because I mean, there's multiple doors kids enter there. I mean, there's like fifteen doors kids go in in the morning. Which doors, I mean, they're going to lock off the other doors after that?
That's correct. And just for safety purposes, we don't want to identify where those areas are, but we do have three, we would have three locations that would be dedicated for entrance.
And they will make sure the other entrances are locked off?
Our entrances are always locked.
Well, I mean, I think, just dropping one off there in the mornings.
That's correct.
Kids going in this doors and kids going in that door.
That's correct. We'll have three dedicated locations where they'll be able to enter into the mornings.
Board members, you all received a copy. The Facilities Committee asked me to email this information out to y'all and so I did that. So you do have a copy of the quote for these twenty-three systems. And again, it's a subscription and so the first year would be seven hundred, eight thousand, one hundred and ninety-three dollars and ninety-five cents. And then the other three subsequent years will be six hundred fifty-five thousand, four hundred and forty-two dollars and ninety-six cents. Also in that email, you know, I, I put in there that this year, our school district will receive fifty thousand dollars for safety, fifty thousand dollars safety money from the state of Georgia, which will be a one-time drop. That will be for eight of our schools. And so we can take that fifty thousand, times that eight, times eight schools, that'll be four hundred thousand that we can use, apply toward the first year. I've also, I've got CARES funding approved for a hundred and seventy thousand dollars that can be used toward the systems for the first year. So you take that four hundred thousand plus the hundred and seventy, so that's five hundred and seventy thousand that we can apply toward the first year, which will leave us a remaining balance of a hundred and thirty-eight thousand, one ninety-three, ninety-five. And what we can do is, we can split fund that between SPOSS, sixty-nine thousand coming from SPOSS, and then the other sixty-nine thousand coming from General Fund to cover the first year, or you could pull all of it from SPOSS. Because in the referendum, safety was the number one priority that we put in that referendum for, for East SPOSS. So that's, that's how we're going to take care of the first year. For the next three years, again, the lease will be six, six hundred fifty-five dollars for, six hundred fifty-five thousand, four hundred and forty-two dollars and ninety-six cents. That can also be split funded for those years. You can take three hundred and twenty-seven thousand from General Funds, three hundred and twenty-seven from East SPOSS, or you can, you can just take one monthly East SPOSS payment and be done with it for, for the entire year. Okay? So, but again, the, the money is there. And in FY twenty-four General Fund budget, the Facilities Committee, we talked, and what we're going to do is moving forward in our, in our, in our budgets, moving forward, we're going to add a line item for safety and we're going to place four hundred thousand dollars in that line item to cover any and all safety that we need throughout the district. So again, these systems are much needed and we, we, we have the funding to take care of it for the next three or four years.
Madam Chair, I don't think any system, if they're in position to purchase such technology, cannot do it in this day and time. So move, that we move forward and direct the, direct the director of Finance as well as our internship lieutenant to do it the feasible, most feasible way.
Yes, sir.
Any other member in the Facility Committee that has any comment? So move.
All in favor? Thank you. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Henry. Please make note, this is an action item.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
First thing, before you approve of the superphone, unless you need it, you go to a game, that's the first thing you count, the superphone, and next thing you count another, based on the rock site, so. Getting ready for the, essentially, Ellington, so, acting item tonight, just to put that final approval, so we push forward. The band is working diligently to make sure they're ready to do their part, so, to make sure I can't give a knock, to make sure I did my part. So if you have any questions regarding the trip.
Do you have any questions?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the field trip to, since you say Ellington, for the Badosta High School.
Okay, dear.
I move that we approve the trip to go to the Ellington Regional Festival at Tennessee State University.
Second.
All in favor? You ready to go to anything?
Thank you, guys.
Yes, ma'am. Madam Chair, Board, the next item on the list here is the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four Board Meeting Calendar. At our last meeting, I, I presented you all with the meeting dates, regular meeting dates, and the work session dates, and where they will be held. The work sessions will be held during, during next school term. Tonight, this is an action item, unless there's a discrepancy with the calendar.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the twenty-three, twenty-four Board Meeting Calendar as presented.
Second. All in favor?
Okay, all right. Madam Chair, Board, the next item on the list is C, Reading Level Expectations for Promotion. And again, this is an action item if the Board so chooses to take action on it tonight. But you should have two pieces of documentation for me, from me. You should have Pop Board Policy I, H-E, Promotion and Retention. And if you notice in our Promotion and Retention policy, that was last revised on June twenty-second, twenty twenty-one. Under first and second grades, you will see the final grade, in order to be promoted, final grade average of a seventy or above in English, Language Arts, and Math. Plus, a student must master a, have mastery of a minimum reading proficiency level as determined by the district. Well, that, that those levels are determined by the reading leg styles that are set by the state. And you should have a copy of the mastery of minimum reading proficiency as determined by the district and what we are expecting those students to have minimum reading proficiency at each level. And so you'll notice grades three through five, it reads the same, final grade average of a seventy or above in all four academic subjects, plus those students must master a minimum reading proficiency as determined by the, the district. And it's the same for six through eight. So tonight, if the Board chooses to move away from number two, having, having the students master a minimum reading proficiency, what we would need to do is, we would need to go in and change or amend the IHE Promotion and Retention Policy.
Madam Chair. Is this, isn't this the same one that we suspended last year?
Yes.
My recommendation had, had changed and I think, again, we'll be doing these, our students in ingestion. If we require them to do something that they are not prepared to do at this time, I'm recommending, again, tonight, that we wait until the superintendent gets in place and hopefully he can get us on the right track in regards to where we need to be with the, with our reading program. I'm, 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 I feel strongly that we should suspend this policy again this year and let the superintendent get it in place to handle this urgent business.
Madam Chair, I'm curious as to what other schools in our area or in the state use this as a basis for retention and promotion. Obviously, we need standards for our students. And this is a good measure of where our students are, but to use that as a basis for retention, placement, or promotion, I, I have issues with. Again, I, and even if you look at the website of the people that developed this, there is nothing on their website that says this is a great tool to use for deciding if your students are ready to move to the next grade level. It basically says, this is a great tool to have in place to see where your students are and to see what your administrators and your teachers need to work on with your students. Doesn't say, if they don't hit this certain score, you should keep them back. So I, I'm interested to see if there are other schools that use this as a basis for what we're using it for and not just a basis to provide us with a level of where we are with our students and what we need to do to help our students.
Yes, ma'am, I can answer that. I, I did call around to a few school districts and those school districts that I talked to, they do not use this as a measure for promotion, retention. They use it as a measure to, to keep track of the reading proficiency, but it's not tied in with promotion, retention.
Based on that, Madam Chair, I, I would put out and move that we do amend our Board Policy I, H-E on this and do away with this requirement for promotion, retention, and placement. Do we have a second?
Third motion.
Second.
All in favor? At this time, I'll turn it over to Ms. Children. Good evening to our board. For the sixth time in the ten years since we started the debate team at the high school, we have qualified students to Nationals. This year Nationals is in Phoenix, Arizona. So every, every time we qualify, I'm always excited and amazed. It's, I don't know what I, what do you guys want me to say? I, I brought three of them here just because I can force them to do things. But Nationals is the largest academic competition in the world. It's not just the United States, but several countries from Africa and Asia also compete. In each event, you have about between three hundred and fifty and five hundred entries. For, for the state of Georgia, we qualify about eighty students total for the entire state. And we are basically, there's one qualifier for the first time ever in Camden County, so I'm excited for them. There are no qualifiers in Camden County. Every other qualifier except for Badosta High's ten are from Atlanta. So we're the, we're the program that's, that's, that's not a metro program to qualify for Nationals. We're also one of the few programs in the state of Georgia that does all events. We have debaters, we have speakers, we have interpreters. Some schools just have debate or they just have speech programs. We, my assistant coach, Brianna Crockett, had class tonight, so she couldn't be here. She and I do all of the events and we do it well. We're second in state for speech interpretation and fourth in debate from this year's state tournaments. Our request is for us to be approved to go to Nationals and we are asking the Board to, as they've done in the past, to pay for our travel for the airfare and the hotel fees. The sooner we can buy those plane tickets, the cheaper they are because it is in Phoenix. One, you definitely don't want to be driving cross-country with ten teenagers. But it doesn't make sense for us not to fly. And the sooner we can get this approved, we can get in there and get the hotel rooms and get the airfare. Okay, this is information, all in, do you want to add any questions? How many questions do you have? And you're taking ten students? We've qualified ten, we have one alternate. But the event that he's qualified in, it's unlikely that the kids who, the other kids who qualified are going to drop. So it, I don't expect Carrollton High School to drop their qualifier. So this is, this is their thirty-fourth year going to Nationals in a row, so I don't, I don't see him dropping his qualifiers. Would questions come in? And I, I will say this, our team is one of the few teams, especially academic teams, that truly represents the racial makeup of our school. And that's something that Dr. Richardson, Coach Crockett, and I have worked very hard to make sure, because a lot of times we get, like, some of the programs, it ends up becoming all one race. And so we've worked very hard to make sure that we make it available to everybody. We have some special education students on the team, we have gifted students. Not every student can debate, but there's an event in speech and debate that every child can do. And I say that as a stutterer.
Madam Chair, the Board, the next item on the new business is B, Purchase of District Vehicles for our Safe and Athletic Director. I sent you some information in regards to this. I asked the Board to approve the purchase of two twenty-twenty-three Explorer, one for our Safe and Athletic Director. The state government price, our state contracted price is at thirty-nine thousand, one eighty-five. The state government price, our state contracted price is at thirty-nine thousand one eighty-five. So, the total for two will be seventy thousand three seventy. This is, this, this can be paid for again out of the transportation budget that's been approved for FY twenty-three. So, this is not an added expenditure, it can be covered under transportation. And the reason why we went with the explorers, because they are cheaper than the trucks. The trucks, the state bid price for a truck in F-150 is forty-seven thousand. And for an F-250 is fifty-two thousand. So, that's why they're explorers. So, again, I said...
Didn't we just buy a truck for athletic department?
That was for, that was for the coach. And years past, our football coach served as our athletic director. But the board, several years ago, separated.
That is correct.
That's correct. So, football coaches over football operations, and you have athletic director over all the athletics.
Madam Chair, with the information, with everything now that we know we have to do, we're dependent on the security officer to make sure that she does her job. I know she has a vehicle, but it's not really exactly what she needs. Athletic director tries to go to every event that he possibly can do, and he's doing a great job. I hope that we purchase these two vehicles.
Second.
All in favor?
Madam Chair, I was thinking for an escort for making the safety director. Is that what she had in her head for work?
Okay, may I have a motion to adjourn to next session to discuss now, to negotiate real estate. Is stupid as the mayor in your interview? All in favor? We are.
I'd like to call back to order the bonus board education work section, call people.
Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda to drop in as number 22 changing, and 22 becoming teacher bonuses or employee bonuses to be an action item tonight. And then Board Member comments will move to 23, reminders to 24 A B and C and 25 to the V H U.
Second.
All in favor? I need a motion for the following personnel. Resignations: One P E teacher at Barossa High School, one third grade teacher at S L Mason, one fourth grade teacher at S L Mason, one music teacher at S L Mason, one P E teacher at S L Mason, one math teacher at Barossa Middle, one fourth grade teacher at Silas Mahomes, one first grade teacher at Silas Mahomes, one second grade teacher at J L O Maxx, one custodian at Newbury Middle School, one school nutrition assistant at Silas Mahomes, and one custodian at Barossa Middle School. New hires: One social studies teacher at Barossa Middle, one math teacher at Barossa Middle, one band director at Barossa Middle, one third grade teacher at S L Mason, one pre-k sped teacher at Pineville Elementary, one first grade teacher at Silas Mahomes, one sped teacher at J L O Maxx, one sped teacher at W G nine, one custodian at J L O Maxx. Retirement: One assistant principal at W G nine, one custodian at Newbury Middle School. Promotion: One pre-k teacher at J L O Maxx, one school nutrition manager at Barossa Middle, one school nutrition manager at W G nine. Principal at W G nine Elementary School may have a motion.
We accept superintendent's recommendation.
Second.
All in favor? Twenty-two, this is an action item for employee bonus?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we have employee bonus checks cut that will be delivered by the end of the week following spring break.
Second.
All in favor? Do we have any Board Member comments? Reminders for the Board, for Board members: Barossa Early College Academy will hold their class of 2023, college or college rebuild day on Wednesday, March the 29th, 2023, at the V H U Student Union Theater, first floor, at 1:30 p.m. Barossa High School F F A will have a spring plant sale on Friday, March the 31st, from 10 a.m. to 5 p.m., and Saturday, April the 1st, from 10 a.m. to 4 p.m. at The Greenhouse on campus. Barossa City School will be closed for spring break from April the 3rd through the 7th, 2023. Staff and students will return on Monday, April the 10th, 2023. At this time, may I have a motion to adjourn?
It's our move.
Second.
All in favor? We are adjourned.